Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Burbank Planning Board Meeting. Today is March 9, 2020. Time is now 6:03. The meeting is open. I will be doing the invocation, and Vice Chair Rosori will lead us in the flag salute.
Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city, and please help us to accomplish our goals. In your name I pray, amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Yes, Board Member Gamboa?
Here.
Board Member Liu?
Present.
Board Member Hadiya?
Here.
Vice Chair Rosori?
I am here.
And Chair Attakanyan?
Present.
All board members are present.
Any announcements?
No new announcements.
This is the time and place for the meeting on the proposed policy and project recommendations of the Citywide Complete Streets Plan.
Should we do our all communications?
All communications?
We have to ask for it, right?
Yeah. Yes, yeah, you can ask for it.
Are there any? Okay. All communications are limited to three minutes. Do we have any? None, confirmed. Alright, now this is the time and place for the meeting on the proposed policy and project recommendations of the Citywide Complete Streets Plan. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this meeting?
No.
No.
I just want to state that I did participate in a question and answer session that... I'm sorry?
Is it a stakeholder meeting?
The stakeholder meeting, and also, I believe, this was a long time ago, we were directed by staff to have an interview with one of the people that were conducting this.
So there was a, I believe they reached out to the planning board members to have one-on-one?
Right.
Interviews with staff and the consulting team?
Yeah, so those two things I did participate in. My disclosure.
Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
We did not receive any written communications.
Okay, will the representative of the Community Development Department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us, please?
Good evening, Chair Attakanyan, members of the board. My name is Hannah Wu. I am a senior planner with the Transportation Division, Community Development Department. Tonight, we are here to present on the Citywide Complete Streets Plan, which staff and the consultant team have been working on for about fifteen months or so. And tonight, we are here to receive any feedback and also answer any questions that the board may have. In general, this may tie into the future as Planning Division staff are currently working on several long-range plans, including the Golden State Specific Plan and the Burbank Center Plan update. So some of these recommendations you may see referenced back to once the Planning Division brings that forward to you all in the future.
And while Hannah's getting the presentation ready, just want to let the board know that your attachment one is the actual slide, so you have them eleven by seventeen, in case you want to follow along.
Okay, to start off, we have a outline here where we will talk over the background, community input, goals, methodology, proposed policy recommendations, and proposed project recommendations. So just to start off, what are complete streets? A quick definition here is that a complete street is something that is designed, operated, maintained, to provide safe mobility for all types of users, ages, and abilities. So it's really about giving people the option to move freely and safely throughout the community and how we get there in the future. Why are we creating a complete streets plan? Well, in our Burbank 2035 General Plan, which was adopted, there is a defined complete streets goal that's identified in our general plan. So we've taken what is identified as a goal in the general plan document, and this Citywide Complete Streets Plan is really the implementation plan or the roadmap to how we get to achieving those policies. We also have our Burbank Bicycle Master Plan, which was adopted in 2009, the update, and it was originally created in 2003. So it's been some time since we've really taken a look at the Burbank Bicycle Master Plan. So the Complete Streets Plan also takes a fresh look at the Bicycle Master Plan in ways that we can update that today. Some of the outcomes that we are anticipating with the, hopefully, adoption of this plan is that throughout this process, we've engaged the community on a citywide level. We haven't really done that too much on a citywide level, really talking about transportation and how the community wishes to see transportation transform throughout the city in the future. We also hope to establish policies that guide city staff, as well as maybe even private developers, that want to approach the city with different types of applications, and really providing the policy and guidance to let the community values shine through in those types of ways. We will also be identifying priority projects that identify, really transforming those policies that we are defining with this plan that are being proposed into priority projects. So throughout this process, we've split this project up into four distinct phases, with community outreach really flowing through the entire process. We started with discovery and analysis, alternatives, preferred plan, and today, we are here with the implementation plan as we begin to draft and finalize that. We, throughout this process, we conducted seven outreach events and split those outreach events into two distinct phases. So in phase or round one, we had the visioning phase, which took place between April 2019 and May 2019. We conducted four events during that time, and we reached about 140 participants. We were at the downtown farmer's market at the walk-in, we held a walking and biking tour. We held a pop-up event with a little table and some interactive activities at the Magnolia Park area for ladies and gents' night out. We were at the media district where we held an open house workshop, and then we had a booth at the Downtown Arts Festival. So we really wanted to go into the process without having any preconceived notions of how we're going to be shaping the plan. So the purpose of the round one visioning phase was to hear what the community input really was to shape round two, which then became the ideas phase. We took what we heard in phase one of the visioning from the community and translated that into policies as well as project recommendations. So then we went back out to the community in round two, held three distinct events, and reached approximately 200 people. We went back to the downtown farmer's market, held a pop-up event with some interactive activities. We went to Bud Over Park. Historically, we just haven't done a lot of outreach in the South San Fernando area, but in our data analysis as well as community outreach, we heard a lot that, and saw a lot that, the South San Fernando area is an area that really needs some attention. As we, as you all may know, there's a lot of senior facilities in that area, parks, schools, and also just the analysis such as collision data really pointed us to focus on that area. Lastly, we went to Holiday in the Park and held an interactive workshop with some boards as well. So overall, throughout the process, we've received a varying degree of community input. But a lot of that input was largely remained consistent throughout all seven outreach events, including speeds, vehicle speeds really have an impediment to people feeling like they do want to have the opportunity to walk and bike more and take transit. So that desire is there, but some of the fears with vehicle speed and also some gaps and barriers that currently exist in the city are ones that really prevent people from taking that extra step. To expand on the gaps and barriers, something that we heard consistently throughout the stakeholder interviews, as well as the outreach events, was that the I-5 freeway presents as a huge barrier to people who want to cross over the two parts of Burbank, the hillside area and the flatlands. In general, we also heard that cars are also part of the conversation, so we want to give people the option, if they are not able to walk, bike, or take transit, that we want to be focusing on improving safety for all people. Also, another input that we received was seniors, people with disabilities, and school-aged children. Those are really points that are of priorities. So from listening to the community in both round one and round two of the outreach events and in the stakeholder interviews, we then created ten overarching goals for the Complete Streets Plan. These range from completing all networks of travel, separating people from either fast-moving traffic or people walking slowly, building better neighborhoods, bridging across infrastructure barriers, not only the I-5 freeway, but we also have two rail corridors in the city and the 134 freeway, fostering a healthier Burbank, balancing competing goals and priorities, making Burbank a more inclusive city, enabling people to be and feel safe, spreading shade and shelter, and being proactive, whether that's really taking advantage of low-hanging fruit, whether we, you know, roll in these types of improvements with routine maintenance or repaving projects, or whether staff is going forward to really seek out funding to implement these projects. So next, we come to the methodology. Here, we took a look at the four distinct modes, and I'll go through these a little quickly as the next, in the next few slides, I'll also show this map again. But this map shows where we identified priority streets for pedestrians, streets for transit users, bicyclist priority streets, motorists' priority streets. And once we really laid all these different modes together, this is the map that we arrived at. As you can see, the different colors show the different modes that are prioritized in these streets. We then applied a second filter, which ranged from high-intensity areas, at-risk communities, whether it's vulnerable ages or those that are more predisposed to be closer to the I-5 freeway and also pollution. And also, we looked at collision data, so bicyclist collision data, motorists' collision data, and also pedestrian collision data. We then overlaid all those gray shaded areas together and came to this map. And then when we overlaid the colored streets with the shaded map, we came to this map that you see here. As you can see, there's a lot of different priorities that are taking place throughout the city, and it really covers almost the entire city. So then we clipped those areas to see what is of the highest priority, where staff and resources should be focused first to get the highest return on our investment. And those are the streets that you see here. So each of these different modes in the Complete Streets Plan have a distinct chapter going through overarching policies that do apply citywide, but these are really the streets that we would want to be going to first. So I'll go through each of the policy recommendations. First, we have pedestrians. So some of the policy goals that we outlined for this chapter in the plan are things like providing uninterrupted, visible, and safe paths of travel, really creating a network that's safe for all ages and abilities, promoting access to transit, and then also having the priority for students to be able to walk to school safely. So pedestrian crossings, there are a couple items that we are looking at as part of the recommendations, things such as bidirectional curb ramps, high-visibility crosswalks, curb extensions, mid-block crossings, raised crosswalks, and enhancing crossings at two-way stop-controlled intersections. So we have various locations throughout the city that have two-way stop controls. So if you think about, in some of our hillside streets, you have stop signs on one side of the street, and then the other leg is free-flowing. So how do we enhance pedestrian connectivity across those areas? And we also looked at things on how we can improve and integrate technology into our existing traffic signal controls, such as audible pedestrian signals for those that are hearing impaired, advanced walk signals, so it's giving pedestrians a couple seconds lead time before the vehicles start moving. And we're also looking at some recommendations centered around when and how to apply scramble crosswalks, which is when people can cross in any direction. You may have seen a lot of those in our neighboring city in Pasadena. So then, the pedestrian section also looks at how we can make improvements along the street. So these are things like, really a policy around completing missing sidewalks citywide. We work with our Public Works Department, who analyze the existing streets in our city, and, which is the map that you see in the bottom right-hand corner. These are areas in which sidewalks are currently missing, either on one side of the street or on both sides of the street. So actually, luckily, in the city of Burbank, we were able to find that many of the sidewalks in the city are actually built. But it's really those key areas that are either near schools, libraries, parks, transit stops, that need to be prioritized for sidewalk connectivity. Wider sidewalks, establishing sidewalk zones, so that people are able to anticipate exactly where things are when they're walking, whether we have consistency in where we place utility boxes, you know, street furniture, sidewalk dining, really establishing a frontage zone that's consistent throughout the city. And we also looked at some policies centered around pedestrian-level lighting. So then next is the transit chapter, and we focused on how do we make transit really friendly for all ages and abilities, improving access to transit, and what amenities can people find there once they arrive, so that there's clear signage and wayfinding. Some improvements that we are recommending for the transit section are guidance on where bus stops are placed, amenities such as lighting, seating, signage and wayfinding, and trash receptacles to really keep that area clean, and also accessibility clearances and passive travel, so whether people are pushing a stroller or on a wheelchair, they're able to get in and around those transit stops and shelters safely. The next chapter focuses on bicyclists. So this chapter focuses, like many other chapters, really providing a facility that's accommodating for all ages and abilities, closing gaps and eliminating barriers, again, those barriers that are present physically over the I-5 freeway, the 134, or the other rail corridors, and then just general safety and comfort. This chapter also talks a bit about how we choose bikeway facility types. So when our Bicycle Master Plan was updated and adopted in 2009, you know, the Class IV facility, which is the Protected Bikeway, did not exist at the time. So there is reason to take a fresh look at this type of plan, to integrate those types of facilities, so that in Burbank, we're able to utilize those. So I'll just run through the bikeway class or types quickly. So going from the least protected to the most protected, the least protected type of bikeway facility is Class III or bicycle route. And we have some examples of those throughout the city, shown in the pictures to the right. So we have Verdugo and Kenneth that are shown, and they can be shown with either sharrows or shared lane markings, which are just white pavement markings with a bicycle symbol on the pavement, or they're currently shown with bicycle signage. So moving forward, this plan establishes that we want to be consistent when we're applying these types of treatments, so really combining the placement of the shero and the signage together. Bicycle lanes, we have many of these throughout our city existing today, and it's just striping along the street. It's the very typical bike lane that many places have. So the next facility type is one that currently does not exist in the city, but as planning board members may have seen, some development projects in the recent past come forward with these types of improvements. So the Class IV or Protected Bicycle Lane takes place in two forms. So one of them is the in-street type, where it's almost like a bicycle lane with an extra buffer and then the posts or bollers that provide an extra layer of protection for the bicyclist from the adjacent travel lane. The other type is one that's raised to be sidewalk level and next to the pedestrian path of travel. So in these examples, for example, Avion will be building the in-street example along Hollywood Way below, on the south side, below their project. And then in front of Avion, they will be building the sidewalk level Protected Bicycle Lane for that project. Also, First Street Village is one that will be building the sidewalk level bike lane in front of their property. The most protected facility is the Class I or Shared Use Multipath, which is more of a recreational type of facility, and almost similar in feel to the raised sidewalk level one. So in going through this plan and analysis, we held a study session with council last summer in June to really get a feel of how we should be moving forward and if we're going on the right track for this plan. And a question that we had from council was that, is there a way that we can implement these types of bike facilities to be more protected in a quick implementation, quick build way in existing street right-of-way? So we found that this figure on the left-hand side shows an example of an existing arterial street. So if you think of, like Victory, for example, we looked at how this type of street could be upgraded to provide protective bicycle facilities. So you'll see here in option one and option two, since Burbank is a pretty built-out city, we looked at different variations of how this could occur, whether it's an in-street bicycle facility or a sidewalk level bicycle facility. And we found that we really do have to talk about trade-offs. So in the top right, you'll see the sidewalk level bikeway, and if you think about Victory, for example, Victory has pretty wide sidewalks. It's 16 feet. So this type of facility, although it is capital intensive, we don't really have to touch the existing travel lanes. We're really just reallocating the space that we have between the pedestrian sidewalk area and then adding on that bike lane. It will require possibly moving some utilities or relocating some items that are really close and adjacent to the curb. But in general, this is one that really maintains the existing right-of-way. The second option was one that is in the street, but this will have to, you know, really talk about the trade-offs, really rebalancing priorities. So in this option, we looked at the possibility of removing parking. So these are just some figures showing how we further protect bicyclists as they cross driveways, how they interact with accessible on-street parking, and also how they are able to be accommodated at transit stops and protected through the intersection. So the next chapter, we focused on motorists. And for this chapter, we looked at providing separation between people driving, bicycling, and walking. We also looked at traffic calming treatments and increasing and improving sightlines and visibility to improve motorist safety. The applicability here is, we looked at streets that have high speeds, high volumes of vehicles, and also intersections that are skewed or odd angled. So anywhere in the city where we have, where the street grid meets the freeways or the rail lines, is when we find that skewed intersection. In these areas, we wanted to really focus on motorist safety. So some of those elements that we looked at are speed humps or speed cushions. A design that our Public Works Department is currently piloting is speed humps or speed cushions that have a specific design, a little slot in the middle that still allows for emergency vehicles to be able to pass through that street. Reducing turn radius in the city, so that right-turning vehicles are moving slower as they make those turns. Speed feedback signs, retro reflective backplates, so that's the center photo in the bottom that you see, where it's that reflective yellow backing on the backplate of the signal head to improve visibility, whether it's in rainy or nighttime conditions, or really for the elderly. Emergency vehicle preemption, so having future technology that may be integrated with our current emergency vehicle fleet, so whether that's fire trucks or police vehicles, so that they're able to pass through those intersections more safely, giving them a green light as they approach the intersection. We also looked at various minimum lane widths. So street reconfigurations, these are to improve sightlines at those skewed intersections. We also found that some of the streets in Burbank are very wide, so having the ability to introduce infrastructure such as landscaping, urban greening, and stormwater capture. Next, we looked at green streets. So the policy goals that we set out here are to treat stormwater more effectively, reduce the demand on traditional stormwater infrastructure. We want to integrate any of these projects as it relates to the Citywide Complete Streets Plan with traffic calming elements, improving air quality, reducing the heat island effect, and just general street beautification. So the city currently has a green streets policy and manual, and we really wanted to provide some structure to that and really hearken back to the green streets policy that we have. So for the applicability of these, we looked at streets that may lack shade, wide streets, and skewed or odd-angled intersections. So this is, these are, these streets are highlighted in gray, show areas that could have the possibility of adding more street trees and shade. These are the wide streets that we looked at, the skewed angled intersections. Here, we have some examples of how we could integrate green streets and stormwater capture with traffic calming treatments or transportation-related projects. So whether that's including them in curb extensions, medians, parkways, or even having community gardens. We have a chapter also focusing on equestrians, facilitating and accommodating this unique access specific to the Rancho neighborhood, and promoting safety of horses and their riders in this community. Those streets are highlighted really in the Rancho area, so that we can provide and improve accessibility to the LA River and also Griffith Park. The last chapter that we have is smart streets. So how do we plan for future technology? A lot of, there has been a lot of discussion recently about the existence of e-scooters, how to really deal with that. It's a technology that emerged very quickly, and also the increase in Uber and Lyft usage or Amazon deliveries. There's just a increase in the need for curb space and allocation. So in the future, we want to be able to really allocate that curb space in a way that's dynamic possibly, and and even have some economic incentives um for managing that type of curb space. Um, so now I will go through the proposed project recommendations. So we looked at the policies that are outlined um in the plan and then uh created uh proposed project recommendations that really focus on these priority areas. We split these projects up into short-term, midterm, and long-term or aspirational projects. This is a long-range plan, so it ranges anywhere from today to thirty years from now. Um, in the short-term category, we looked at things that are located within the colored streets or the shaded streets, um, things that could be low capital costs or more quick implementation, um, thi- projects that are grant-eligible and maybe even the possibility of using existing funds. On the other end of the spectrum, we have long-term or aspirational projects. So these are relatively more high capital cost, will require multi-agency or multi-jurisdictional uh coordination, and also just additional public engagement and support on a wider level. So the first three projects that I will present, they're actually already programmed in our capital improvement program. But in looking at these three projects through the complete streets lens, we saw that there is a greater need to really um expedite these types of projects. Um, so the first project is the Bonnywood Place Closure Project. Um, and this is located at Bonnywood Place at First Street and Olive Avenue. Um, this is currently a cut-through access road where people access it to go to the I-5 freeway. This project would focus on pedestrian safety. Um, a lot of motorists today, if you're heading kind of towards the Olive Bridge, will cut through that area to access the I-5 freeway. Um, if you've ever really taken the the metroling station to downtown, um, come up to the elevator or taken the ramp up to Olive Bridge, uh, you'll you'll know that once you come down to Bonnywood and and First and Olive, uh, you're kind of met with this very small uh pedestrian landing where uh people are kind of huddled on this corner and it's a little confusing on how and where to cross. So this project would be closing off that access road, uh improving the uh pedestrian ramps, uh installing high-visibility crosswalks, and generally creating a better first mile, last mile connection from the downtown Burbank metroling station into the downtown. Uh, the next street is all, uh, the next project is also a first mile, last mile connection project from the downtown metroling station. This is the Front Street Class Four Bikeway Phase One Project. And as we go through these projects, you'll see that a lot of these are broken out into phase one and phase two as we look at how to do quick build, lower-cost implementation, and then once we have um something that the community can really try and see if they like, uh, phase two upgrades that to something that's a little bit even more safe and then uh a little bit more capital-intensive. So this this facility would be in the street, um, uh separated with bollards, and it is a bu- a two-way bike facility connecting from the downtown metroling station to First Street and and Verdugo Avenue. Um, there's a good amount of bicyclist activity currently today that try to access the downtown Burbank metroling station, but really have no um safe and convenient way to get into downtown. So where that project leaves off, the next project picks up. Uh, this is the First Street Complete Streets Project Phase One. Um, so it starts from uh Verdugo and First Street and goes all the way up to San Fernando and Grinnell. And this project would be adding a a bikes bicycle facility again in the street with bollards um for a phase one. Um, and this would also, we we named this project Complete Street Project because um in the Priority Streets map, you actually see that all four colors are shown. All four modes, uh pedestrian, motorists, um, transit users and bicyclists are prioritized on this street. Um, so this street is one that really um hearkens our attention for uh building out a complete street on on this segment. Um, so we do have in uh these conceptual plans to provide um transit, um, you know, uh boarding and alighting as well. So the next project is the Downtown San Fernando Reconfiguration Project. This is on, in downtown, um, in downtown Burbank from on San Fernando Boulevard between Magnolia Boulevard and Olive Avenue. Uh, this project really focuses on pedestrian safety. Um, so if you've, many of you have walked um on in on San Fernando Boulevard in downtown. Um, the sidewalks are actually pretty wide. They're ten feet there. But given the amount of pedestrian activity, uh storefronts having signage out, um, there's really not too much room for people to walk side by side, just given the amount of people walking there and also some heavy, um, you know, clunky uh street furniture such as the big planters and the cement um cement planters. So this project would be focusing on how do we improve pedestrian safety um by uh making San Fernando be one-way. So this is, this would be a phase one project where we really just do this with signage and striping, uh making, retaining the two lanes, but switching it to be one-way going northbound towards the mall. Um, we would be removing about six spaces uh so that we're able to maintain the head-in uh angled parking along that stretch. The next project is a study. So um in our research, our data analysis and in our outreach, the downtown area really was highlighted um throughout the plan. Uh, we saw that there's a lot of people walking here and a lot of collisions happening in this area. Um, so we, as part of the next step for this project, we would like to look at a study that focuses solely on the downtown and how we can apply the policies that are outlined in the plan uh to this thirty-eight intersection area in the downtown. Uh, the purpose of this would be to improve, really focusing on pedestrian safety. The next project is a citywide safe routes to school site assessment and conceptual design plan. We'd be looking at all schools citywide. Um, so as you may know, the Public Works Department has worked on um implementing fifteen mile per hour school speed zones around all schools in Burbank and also having always stop signs at every school throughout the city. Uh, this was implemented uh about a year and a half ago. And so this would be uh building upon that uh first step that the city has taken in looking at school safety. Um, so obviously, as many of you may know, going fifteen miles per hour is actually pretty difficult in a car. So how do we uh take that signage that's out there today um showing the fifteen mile per hour and really actually reinforcing that with engineering and infrastructure? The next project is looking at city walk, citywide sidewalks. Um, so the plan identifies really the need to complete sidewalks citywide. So how do we build a program around that? Uh, and how do we um build out city, citywide sidewalks throughout? Um, we would be prioritizing locations that are near schools, parks, libraries, senior centers, and transit stops. The next project is a citywide local road safety plan. So this is looking at motorist safety. How do we um really look at the data that we have in the city uh as far as collisions go, looking at our street network and how to improve motorist safety in the future? So the next project, now we're heading into the midterm projects. Um, this is again the downtown San Fernando reconfiguration project that was making um San Fernando be one-way. Uh, this would be um reducing it to one lane going uh northbound from again Olive to Magnolia. So currently today, we have one lane going northbound um towards the mall. We would be removing the southbound lane. Uh, in order, we would be wanting to do this to prioritize pedestrian safety. So again, as I mentioned, currently today, we have about ten feet of sidewalk in the downtown. Um, we'd be gaining um that space from removing the travel lane uh to expand the sidewalks to be seventeen feet on each side. So that could allow for things like sidewalk dining, uh really streamlining the the street furniture that that's down there, the planters, uh and making room for pedestrians. Uh, the next project is a downtown Magnolia Boulevard Improvement Project Phase One. So this is looking at the um, the intersection at First Street and Magnolia Boulevard. Um, crossing over uh First Street um along Magnolia Boulevard today, it uh if you're um kind of here, um, the Chevys and um uh, sorry, the 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 comedy uh place to the mall, it's about a hundred feet. Um, and we would be um proposing to improve pedestrian safety here by reducing that pedestrian crossing distance uh by about thirty feet. Uh, for this project, it is a phase one project, so we would be uh retaining the existing vehicular capacity. Um, if you've ever walked uh along Magnolia Boulevard on the south side, um, you'll know that you've seen a very small sidewalks, very narrow sidewalks there with street trees and uh utility boxes. Um, the middle photo that you see here um kind of shows a picture of that. And so with this project, we'd also be pushing out the sidewalk and reallocating um the parking spaces, about eight parking spaces on the south side of Magnolia there uh in order to push out the pedestrian sidewalk area and um provide a more pedestrian-friendly amenity. The next project, uh now we're shifting gears to Magnolia Park. So this is Magnolia Boulevard in Magnolia Park, uh Phase One. Uh, in our outreach in the Magnolia Park area and looking at the data, uh, we saw that a lot of people want to cross over Magnolia at all intersections along that area. So this is looking at an eight-block p- um span from on Magnolia Boulevard between Catalina and Hollywood Way uh to improve pedestrian safety as well as connectivity. There's a lot of stores on either side of Magnolia Boulevard that many people want to cross. And this project would be adding uh cr- pedestrian crossing points that are controlled either by flashing pedestrian beacons or traffic signals so that people are able to safely and conveniently cross uh uh across Magnolia. The next project is um the Chandler Bikeway Access Improvement Project. Uh, this project really came about in talking uh with a lot of the community members. Uh, many community members uh really enjoy Chandler as an asset. But today, if you uh want to access the path, um, if you are pushing a stroller um or in a wheelchair or even have a a bike with a um with with your uh kids in a trailer, it's very difficult to access the path because once you're uh crossing over Chandler, you are met with a um with a curb. So um many times today, people have to travel about a quarter mile to up to a half mile to be able to uh safely access a pedestrian ramp, an accessible ramp to access the bikeway. Um, so this project focuses on pedestrian safety where we would be um making Chandler be uh the very typical one-way in east direction, retaining the two uh vehicle lanes um as well as creating new accessible points across the bikeway uh with pedestrian ramps and high-visibility crosswalks. Another project we looked at was Edison and Hollywood Way. This is an example of a uh odd angled or skewed intersection. So today, if you are um trying, for example, making, trying to make a left onto Hollywood Way from Edison Boulevard, um, you're kind of having to really veer over your left shoulder to look at the oncoming traffic coming down Hollywood Way. So we, with this project, we'd be re- reconfiguring that to improve motorist safety so that um you're able to see oncoming traffic more at a ninety-degree angle. Also, uh, this is a pedestrian project as well. Um, we would be reducing the crossing distance that people are having to cross um across Hollywood Way um at Edison. Um, and also uh gaining back the space, we would have the opportunity to also install some sort, some sort of um stormwater capture or even small community garden in that area with the reclaimed asphalt. Uh, now we're moving into the long-term projects. Um, so this is back now again to Magnolia Boulevard, uh Magnol- Magnolia Boulevard, Magnolia Bridge in downtown. Um, so eventually, the city will have to um completely rehabilitate the Magnolia Bridge. And when we do that, uh, we want to be able to make sure that we're providing uh pedestrian and bicyclist connectivity over Magnolia Bridge into the downtown area. We looked at many different opportunities to cross over the I-5 freeway, given the amount of input that we heard in in the barrier to cross the I-5 uh to access the downtown or um to the Victory area. Um, we looked at many different options, whether um that's Burbank Boulevard, Magnolia Boulevard, or Olive Avenue. Those are really the three uh crossings over the I-5 freeway that we have today. Um, in looking at these options, um, we really saw Burbank Boulevard as a more of a motorist prioritized street. So we have a lot of uh on-and-off ramps there. Um, there's a lot of people going to Five Points to access the Empire Center. So it's really a a motorist uh prioritized street. Although we would along all these segments be providing pedestrian uh connectivity as well. Um, then we looked at Olive uh Bridge. As you all may know, there has been some talks about uh Metro um with their proposed a bus wrapper transit project uh connecting uh across um North Hollywood, Glendale, and Pasadena. So um Olive is really slated for transit and transit use. And today, Olive also experiences a lot of transit activity in that area. So we saw Olive as a transit prioritized street. Uh, Magnolia um is the um, the crossing that we settled on because of the uh volumes of pedestrians that we have in that area and the sensitivity that we have to the mall and the downtown. Um, so the next project is the um Downtown Magnolia Boulevard Improvement Project Phase Two. So this is where we uh pushed out the sidewalk and then shortened the crossing distance at First and Magnolia. Um, this is taking a second step at that, uh phase two, really building out uh the sidewalk area even more, adding landscaping, um, and also improve connectivity for bicyclists. Um, so this is really a pedestrian and bicyclist-focused project. Um, so as we're picking up off where the Magnolia Bridge comes down uh for the future Magnolia Bridge that we are proposing uh bike lanes, uh this project would be picking up to have two-way bike lanes um ac- across Magnolia in front of the mall area. Eventually, you would be able to go across Magnolia Bridge on a bike, uh cross in front of the mall, possibly even shop in the downtown mall area, and then connect up to the existing uh bike lanes that we have on Third Street today. So really building out that network and um eliminating uh those um gaps that we currently have today. Um, so this would be proposing to remove one westbound travel lane. Um, in looking at the traffic volumes, we do have heavier traffic um going um eastbound uh towards the hillside um and lesser traffic today um as people are going uh westbound. So we'd be removing that one westbound travel lane to push out the sidewalks, um, uh have uh additional areas for landscaping, the possibility of sidewalk dining, and then, as I mentioned, the two-way bicycle facility. Um, this will have to um have additional traffic analysis when this project comes forward. An example of a wide street project that we looked at was the North Olive Avenue area between Sunset Canyon and Kenneth Road. Um, so this would be a bi- uh a pedestrian-focused project as well as green streets-focused project. Um, so we have, we explored two options here. Um, Olive Avenue is actually pretty wide uh in for that segment. Uh, we have, it's a residential street uh with one car uh lane in each direction with parking on both sides. So we would able, be able to retain um all those, all those lanes um and then have a uh twenty-foot median in the middle, whether that's for um stormwater capture with landscaping uh median in the middle or having a mix of both, landscaping with stormwater capture and a pedestrian path almost similar to Chandler, uh Chandler-type of amenity for the hillside area to connect into the downtown. An equestrian project we looked at was uh the Mariposa Bridle Path Project. Um, so this would be on Mariposa Street between Riverside and Valley Heart Drive to connect to uh the bridge that's existing uh into Griffith Park and crossing over LA River. Um, this would re- require a request for fu- future dedication along the eastern side of Mariposa. Um, but it would be providing a uh bridle path uh to connect the Rancho neighborhood um uh to LA. Uh, another long-term project that we looked at was Hollywood Way Empire Improvement Underpass Project. So um i- if you've ever driven in this area or even tried to walk this area uh close to the airport, you're met with a very um narrow pedestrian area that's actually not even a sidewalk um under Hollywood Way. So because there's no existing sidewalk there, there are stairwells that are existing um that are enclosed, um, not very greatly lit um that you have to walk under and across and up above again to um uh cross over that area um along Hollywood Way at Van Owen and Empire. Um, so this project would be uh building out um a elevated pedestrian path that bicyclists could also have the ability to use. That would be um placed on the sides of the existing uh underpass structure. Um, a similar example is one in Santa Barbara, if you've been in that area before. Uh, we also identify this project um at a similar uh similar type of treatment for the Alameda Underpass, um, kind of near IKEA. The next project, uh, another long-term project was one in Magnolia Park. Uh, this is phase two of that uh phase one that we looked at where we added the um uh additional crossing points um and curb extensions along Magnolia. So uh this is really taking a completely drastic and different look at what Magnolia Park is today. Um, if you would like to think of it, it's more of building um a downtown commercial feel in this uh Magnolia Park area. Um, so this is a pedestrian-focused project uh where we'd be looking at um removing uh and replacing the the center lane uh with diagonal um head-in parking and then reducing the travel lanes to one-laning with diagonal head-in parking and then reducing the travel lanes to one lane in each direction. So almost similar to how we experience San Fernando Boulevard today, where we have wide sidewalks, some curb extensions in some areas, and then additional parking. So in speaking with the Magnolia Park merchants and also the businesses in the area, we think that we, a piece of input that we've heard over and over again was the lack of parking. So this project would be looking at adding about 22 parking spaces per block in that area. And this is a long-term and aspirational project. So looking at 20, 30 years, we don't know what the future holds for, you know, whether it's automated vehicles or the increase of Uber and Lyft or some other type of mobility technology. This center parking could eventually even be repurposed into urban greening or even closing off this area for farmers' markets in the future. So the last project that we are proposing is, again, a long-term and aspirational idea. This would be capping the 134 freeway in the Media District. So this project would be constructing four decks to connect across the 134 and really providing a place for greenery, park space, and building a neighborhood feel in the Media District area. There's a lot of projects that are either in the pipeline or have been approved, such as Talaria, that are adding a lot of residential units in the Media District area. So how do we provide more greenery and park space for those residents in that area? They could even be programmed with activities or partnerships with adjacent studios to provide an amphitheater that can be publicly accessible to provide even free movie screenings for the community. So the next steps are, March 16th, next Monday, we'll be going to the Sustainable Burbank Commission. Then we'll be going, the next following day, presenting at City Council for a second study session. And then March 26th, we'll be at the Infrastructure Oversight Board. And then on April 21st, we'll be returning to City Council for a public hearing for them to consider the adoption of the final plan. We have been making some of our rounds to various boards and commissions, such as the Transportation Commission. We've also presented to the Downtown Bid and the Magnolia Merchants Association. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Lu. Now is the time to hear from any person in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. Do we have any cards? None? Okay. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
We'll turn to the board's questions. Any questions? Masadia?
I have a question for staff on item four, methodology. How old are the data used for streets, the traffic and everything included? How old are the data?
We looked at a five-year time span from June 2013 to June 2018.
Thank you. And then I have another question. For the proposals of Phase One, is there any budget and schedule also specified or not?
So for the proposed projects, we currently do not have identified funding or budget. They are just proposed projects at this time. The first three projects that I presented, which is the Bonnywood, First Street, Olive Improvement Project, and the two bike way projects that are connecting to the downtown and the metro station, those three are currently funded, but the rest are just proposed projects that would eventually have to be, have identified funding, whether that's through grants or existing city funds or local return funds that the city currently receives.
The three projects that you mentioned are mentioned on Phase One, right?
Yes.
How many Phase One projects we had altogether?
I believe it's five Phase One projects.
And they're all, but three of those are only funded?
Yes.
Have a schedule. Thank you.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Thank you, Paul. It seemed like we had met over a year ago. And when we were meeting, I was saying to myself, how are you going to get your arms around such a massive project? And I think you did a great job, especially phasing this and the way you phased it. I commend you on that. We had talked about maybe in the Rancho doing some corralling. Did that ever come up in any of your interviews with people where you could put some fencing or some corralling to protect the people riding horses?
The corralling, not specifically. It did not come up in any community input that we've heard, but in general, we did hear about wanting to improve equestrian safety. So in the equestrian chapter, we do talk about fencing and the different types of fencing that we could potentially introduce in the area.
And the dedication going down Mariposa to the bridge, is that, I know that narrows. Is that privately owned? Or when you say dedicated back, how do you do that?
Yes. Currently today, in the research that we've done in that area, that section that we would need is privately owned today by this adjacent parcel that is an equestrian use. So should that project come forward one day as an application, we could have, the city could have an opportunity to request a dedication to do some improvements to connect the equestrian use in that area.
Okay. That might be a good place to actually fence so the horses could get down there safe with their passengers. So, and then my other question was, complete streets regarding sidewalks. Do we still get funding from the state for that? Is that still an opportunity where we can complete sidewalks in the city?
I'm not sure about the answer of if we receive funding from the state, but I'm happy to look into that question. In general, the city does allocate funding annually to city sidewalks and the street repair program. I'm just not aware of how much is allocated and from exactly what funding source that really comes from.
Yeah, I know that maybe Mr. Criski remember when we did some of the sidewalks, we had grants over by Luther. When we had that big brouhaha in the city about, we want our sidewalks, we don't want sidewalks.
Yes, Vice Chair Rosati, members of the board, David Criski with Community Development. Traditionally, new project, new sidewalk segments that we've built have been through grant funding, either state grants or federal. We're proposing to actually turn this more into a program and actually start building out those street segments in the prioritized area as part of our annual street programs. We certainly could augment that with state and federal money that still is available for active transportation, but we're kind of turning it a little bit to be more of a, just a programmatic, year-over-year build out of the street segments or the sidewalk segments.
Okay. I was just thinking, if it was a budget issue, we could lean on that section because I know in my neighborhood, it'd be great if we had some sidewalks instead of walking in the middle of the street, so. Great. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Ms. Ambor?
I'd like to thank staff on the report, and I think you guys did an excellent job synthesizing a lot of the concerns and things people said to really great projects. I know I've seen some of these type of interventions on San Fernando Road and Scott, you know, changing the width of the streets, and it's made a massive improvement in the pedestrian realm. So I'm excited to see more of those things happening. And the Bonnywood, that little note right there in Bonnywood, it's probably, you could skip it for a lot of reasons, but you guys had that in an actionable plan, and that's going to make a huge difference for people walking and coming from the metro station, especially with when Burbank Boulevard's closed. So on that note, my first question is those three projects that are funded, what's the timeline for those? Because those would really be helpful in kind of mitigating some of the effects that that closure is going to have.
Yes. So currently, our plan is that, yes, they are, those three projects are funded, but really, they haven't been prioritized in any way. We've just been moving the projects along. As part of this plan, we're really saying that we've taken a look at how the citywide complete streets plan could fit into these projects and prioritizing them. So the plan would be that we've taken, we've really done the conceptual design for them so that they're ready to kind of move on to the next phase, whether that's finishing out the design or even to construction. So for example, the Bonnywood Closure Project, it's kind of a simple project where we would be able to move straight into construction. For the three projects, we will be recommending to the City Council to, with the adoption of the plan, of proposing to move those projects to the next step and gaining their approval.
And then for the school routes, what was the methodology to kind of get that catchment area? Because particularly by Burbank High School on Third Street, I think I might have mentioned this in 1.2. Third Street at Amherst, there's also a diagonal street east, and it's a really wide street that kind of ticks a lot of these boxes. Route to school, see kids walking there every day. Plus, there's a park, so there's kids and seniors all times of day and on the weekends. Extremely precarious street. The new crosswalk interventions are nice, but then that leaves me another question about Magnolia and why not having four-way crosswalks instead of just on one side? But how come that far up north on Third Street didn't get included in the safe routes or the school routes?
So the citywide safe routes implementation and the site assessment project that's identified is looking at a 500-foot radius around all schools because that is the school zone that's identified, and that's the area in which that the city has already implemented the school speed zones of the 15 miles per hour and the all-way stop signs. But that's not to say that really the goal of the site assessment is to look at that. So where are people coming to and from? Each school has its own characteristics, own ways in which kids walk to and from school or even walk to the park in this instance. So the site assessment would first be focusing on that 500-foot radius, but that's not to say that if there is an adjacent couple of streets that really makes sense, that we'd be including that as well.
Yeah, then it'd be worth having a look if you can. And I commend you on your kind of bold visions and ideas for this plan. I think it's really, you know, great ideas. Magnolia Park's a really interesting idea. Saw that works in Lancaster, and that's really been held up as a good model. Did you ever consider going back to the old original alignment on San Fernando Road and just closing it to cars completely?
Yes, we did look at that alternative, and we paired that with a lot of outreach that we did throughout those seven events. Really, the outreach that we heard on bringing back the Golden Mall where San Fernando Boulevard was closed, it was split almost 50/50 down the middle, where people either loved it back when it, how it used to be, or people absolutely hated it and never want to see it back. So we kind of thought that we would find some sort of compromise or middle ground by making it be one-way, reducing the one-travel lane, retaining parking for now, and pairing that with eventual parking management. And then so that pedestrians have to really only look one direction, one direction in which the cars are traveling, instead of negotiating cars traveling in both directions and building out the sidewalks so that we are enhancing that pedestrian space.
Sure. And then one last question, or two questions. For Chandler, was there a methodology to come up with the extra access to it? Because it still seems like there's lots of opportunities to add other cuts to get access from the smaller side streets.
So for the Chandler Access Improvement, we looked at adding connections at every intersection that tees into Chandler. But should we move forward with that project, we would still pair it with outreach and analysis as well, just to really do our due diligence. And so at that time, we could, again, add more connections. But if there is a specific location in which you see that should be added at this time, we can take a look at that as well.
Sure. And then just the last thing, in terms of early, actual, low-hanging fruit, is there any conversation about enforcement? Because I see when I'm walking the neighborhoods, and it's easy for me when I'm walking, I can move around a car that's blocking the, you know, hanging on the driveway apron, I can walk around it. But if someone's in a wheelchair, if someone has a stroller, it becomes a difficult way to maneuver around the neighborhood. And then even the bike lanes, like FedEx has got their own parking spot right there that they park in every day, multiple trucks. So is there a way to increase enforcement on the things that we do have to make them better for people who are, you know, walking and biking?
So throughout the, really the creation of this document, we've been working with all of our city departments, including our police department and fire department. In general, yes, enforcement is needed in order for these projects to be successful. But in this plan, we also identify that enforcement or even just infrastructure is not enough. We really need to take a multifaceted approach to make these projects be successful. So pairing that with education, engineering, enforcement, really, and also really encouraging people to take different modes or really to encourage others to be more proactive in how they look at traffic safety.
So there's no kind of real thing about enforcement, it's just, because there's no, we don't, do we even have a traffic enforcement phone number to call? Like if there's parking, like egregious parking or things like that that are a problem in neighborhoods?
Your residents and community members are able to call our Burbank Police Department General Line, and I'm happy to provide that to you.
Sure. But there's no special, like, traffic enforcement line?
We do have a traffic division.
Yeah.
And when, at least to my understanding, when you call that general line, they're able to allocate whichever staff or division it's more appropriate for. In general, enforcement is expensive. Our police department is very low-staffed. And just in general, really paying for that human capital can become very expensive over time. So we want to pair that with these other types of approaches as well. So engineering and infrastructure, which is the focus of this plan, is a key piece in, for example, the safe routes to school projects. 15 miles per hour, I'm sure a lot of enforcement is needed to achieve that. But what can we do in the roadway to narrow streets or provide drivers the visual cues that cars need to be going slower in this particular area? And also just education in general. We heard a lot throughout the input that we received in our events that traffic safety education is one that's really needed and wanted by the community. So we have some opportunities with the goals and policies that are identified in this plan to possibly apply for future grant funding, such as through the Office of Traffic and Safety for those types of traffic safety education events. And our Burbank Police Department currently applies for those grants and also just separately. They do go around to schools doing some traffic safety education, but we would want to amplify that as well.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Yes, Ms. Lu?
I just want to echo the thanks that you've heard. This is a great report, great recommendations. Just a few questions. In terms of, I know you were talking about bus shelters at one point. Did you look into smart bus shelters? Are you looking into that type of tech in terms of any types of ideas with your proposals?
Yes. So in general, for the transit chapter, we looked at different future technology that we could potentially integrate with our transit shelters. So the way that our transit shelter structure is set up is that we have an agreement with advertising agencies that operate and maintain those shelters, and then the city has an agreement with those companies. So we have the opportunity that with this plan, if we're able to set policies and goals, such as smart shelters, whether that's how the signage is laid out, where the signage is laid out, how it's accessible for those that may be visually or hearing impaired, those types of improvements on the shelters, the city may be able to negotiate a contract in the future pointing to this plan of the priorities that the community sees. So we're hoping that in the negotiations in the future, whenever we have upcoming agreements with advertising agencies, that we're able to outline what the priorities are. And smart shelters would be one of those.
Okay. And then, so in terms of like the plan for this proposal, where does it live so that community members who maybe want to push certain priorities forward that are not, that, you know, you have, you have certain filters in all of your proposals, they have to fit one or the second filter, right? But there are proposals in here, such as the equestrians, that proposals that don't fit any of those filters. So in essence, they likely would not be funded if you're going by your guidelines. So how does the public... So, so how, how does the public become aware of this? Like on your website, you know, so it's not just like locked away in a PDF somewhere, but that they know about it, that they can kind of, they can talk to the city council and say, "We want these proposals to go forward first."
Yes. So, in general, this will be a long-range plan. So, we're not proposing any, you know, code amendments or any of those types of structures. Eventually, when things such as any long-range plans, such as the Golden State Specific Plan or the Burbank Center Plan update, or an eventual general plan update, we would be able to codify some of these elements at that time. But separately, the streets that are outlined in those colors or gray-shaded areas, they're just what we identified as really how to narrow down where to go first in the city, but that's not to say that, that we would only be looking at those modes for those streets. We looked at the four overarching main modes of transportation, walking, biking, taking transit, and driving, but we also wanted to include equestrians and also smart streets in general. But each of the chapters outline goals and policies that would apply citywide. The maps that you see where the priority streets or shaded areas are, are just ways that point city staff or the city in general on where to go first. And it is a living document, so it is a long-range plan that will need to be updated as future trends change or as things change. For example, the transit routes are identified on that map, but of course, transit routes get changed periodically over the years. So, every so often, we will have to update this plan.
So, is there a, a plan to update the plan? So, do you have, like in two years, are you going to go try to find funding? Is there just, you know, how, again, states are living documents, long-term, you know, it's, I think, I'm just concerned that it's very easy to forget about in terms of other priorities sometimes. So, I think that there just needs to be understanding, like every two years, we will update this or whatever the timeframe would be.
So, in general, we haven't really looked at how to fund the eventual updates of the plan, just because we've been focusing on getting this one adopted. But we, in, just in general, you know, every five to 10 years, we would have to take a fresh look at any of the long-range plans that we have, and at that time, we would either seek grant funds or allocate current existing city funds.
I can add to it a little bit, so the Complete Streets Plan that's done now, if council moves it forward as a policy document. I think Hannah mentioned earlier, we have the Golden State Specific Plan, Burbank Center Plan, and at some point, Media District Specific Plan. The hope is to incorporate a lot of the policy work that's in here into those plans, and those are looked at regularly on a daily basis because we're getting project proposals on a regular basis. In addition to that, the general plan actually has language in it that says that we're to look at the plan in its entirety. This is in essence, an outgrowth of that, and that's every five, you know, five to 10 years. So, if you look at it in a continuum, two years from now, we'll be hopefully have adopted specific plans, and then within that two-year window, we're going to be implementing them. So, like in the case of looking at dedication on Mariposa, those two sites, we've had one proposed before. When someone comes in, the right-of-way dimension, I think they looked at, is consistent with the general plan, which is consistent with this. So, what's done after it's dedicated, clearly would be something that if the council moves forward with the policy recommendations, they could look at incorporating that once the dedication's granted. So, there's, so the short answer is, we'll be looking at it on a regular basis, and the more we incorporate these policies, if approved by council, into the specific plans, then the more current and on the mind of everybody, that they'll be on a yearly basis because the plans are going to be implemented every time a project proposal is being submitted.
Great, thank you so much.
I have a general question. Was, was there a consideration for current problems and how to address them as part of the, part of this plan? And I'm speaking as to congestion, vehicular congestion on the streets every day that people, when they're commuting back and forth. Was that considered as part of this, or is that a completely separate issue?
So, the purpose and intent of this plan is really about safety for all ages, all abilities, and all modes. So, the intent of this plan is not to ease congestion, and we really didn't look at how congestion is, plays a role in this plan because of the safety component. So, in general, the city has been really focused on, and not just Burbank, but throughout the US, has been really focused on how to improve vehicular throughput or capacity, and we see this even how we analyze EIRs or traffic studies in looking at congestion based at the intersection level. So, for this plan, really, we're refocusing and rebalancing the priorities of now looking at how to plan for other modes, not just vehicles. So, that really does talk about trade-offs and what the community and council and board members are prioritizing to see the future of this community. So, although this plan, even if it's adopted, you know, next month, we wouldn't be making these wholesale changes right away. It is a gradual process, and with that, we would still be going through CEQA and analysis. But as we see, even CEQA is moving towards really promoting active transportation and looking at projects based on a vehicle miles travel basis instead of a congestion-level basis. But that's not to say that we would still be recognizing that congestion is an issue that is important to the community. This plan in particular, though, it really does focus on the safety component and not congestion.
Well, educate me, because I'm not a transportation engineer. Would vehicular safety contribute to pedestrian safety, or are they independent of each other?
They are not independent of each other. So, based on the community input that we've heard and in just the research and data that's out there, vehicular speeds in general are something that presents a prohibiting factor and feeling that people have towards wanting to and feeling safe to walk or bike to areas. And really, we see this as pedestrians, so whether we take any type of mode or throughout our life, first and foremost, we walk everywhere, whether it's from our car to the front door or just in the downtown area or by taking even transit. So, we know that, based on data and research that's out there, that with the rise in vehicle speed, the, the chance of a, the percentage chance of vehicular, I guess, injury or the percentage chance that someone may be fatally injured goes up as vehicle speeds go up. So, they do play a role hand-in-hand. Vehicle safety, really wanting to, you know, slow people down, even education in distracted driving plays a role, not only for the motorist, but also for people walking or biking.
The example you gave, building this 20-foot-wide center divider on Olive, to me, that sounds more dangerous than having people walk on the sidewalks, because now, as you walk, let's say you're walking down towards downtown, and vehicles are passing on both sides. So, you're definitely not going to see one set of vehicles coming at you, because they'll be coming at you from the back. While you, if you're on the sidewalk, you can walk on the opposite sidewalk down, and you'll see all the vehicles coming. So, to me, if vehicle safety goes hand-in-hand with pedestrian safety, enhancing vehicular, let's say, flow would enhance pedestrian flow. To me, this entire package, although it is, it's very nice, I mean, it's almost, how should I say, something that I would do if I was just building from scratch, but to try and implement all these into the current, let's say, what we have, it seems extremely difficult, and what it's going to do is it's going to drive the vehicles to other streets. So, basically going to take, let's say, a set of vehicles going down Glenox or going down San Fernando, or whatever road you're traveling, as you're widening sidewalks to create pedestrian access, well, those vehicles aren't going to go away, they have to move somehow, so they're all going to go inside the streets, and now it's going to be more of a chaotic type of a situation where people are trying to go across stop signs and people crossing, I don't know. So, I'm not, like I said, I'm not a transportation engineer, but from, from my point of view, what it seems like, what this does is squeezes all the drivers out of the way to create more room for people who are going to be walking and biking. And I can assure you, no one from the hillside is walking anywhere, because once you walk down the hill, try and walk back up. That's not going to happen easily, and obviously, with people who have challenges, that's impossible. So, all right, well...
So, Chair Otakonian, if I could respond to your question?
Yes, yes, please, please. It was more of a diatribe and comments and questions all embedded in one, yes. Go please.
So, just taking your Olive Avenue example for that project that we're proposing, today people are driving relatively quickly down Olive Avenue because, on that hillside segment, because the streets are very wide and the line of sight is, is very wide, as well as people are coming down the hill, for example, if you're traveling westerly. So, in that instance, we've seen based on research that having that very wide area and, and the added component of coming down a hill, a hill, really elevates people's speeds along that segment. So, building that median in the middle, whether that it's, whether if it's for recreational purposes of a sidewalk or jogging amenity, or if it's for stormwater capture with increased landscaping and street trees, either of those really narrows the, and gives drivers the visual cue that this is an area where I want to and feel like I need to go a little bit slower. So, that's really the intent of the plan, as well as that project, is to provide drivers the visual cue that it is a residential neighborhood, so, you know, if you're going through that area, just needing to be a little bit, going a little bit slower. And then, I think in, I think you had a second question regarding just the overall, I guess, rebalancing of modes. So, although, yes, we are a built-out city today, but we want to, with this plan, really create goals and a vision towards what Burbank could become in the future. So, just providing people the option of being able to get from place to place safely from point A to point B, whether that is the option of walking or biking.
And then, just, again, David Krisky, just to add to that, Hannah's done a good job of explaining, but just in an overall basis, to kind of describe the breadth of what we're proposing in the plan and to answer your comments, because we did get comments like what you expressed, that, you know, the one item that Hannah mentioned was that, you know, cars should still be part of the conversation because that's how most people still get around in Burbank. I would say for maybe 80%, 80% to 85% of this plan, we're able to rebalance so that bikes, PEDs, and transit users can be more accommodated while still accommodating cars. That can all be done with not really influencing vehicle throughput. And throughput is what I think you're responding to viscerally, that, hey, if we're going to neck stuff down so much that people are going to be diverting into the hillside, that's a bad outcome. I would say for most of the plan and most of what Hannah described tonight, we're not affecting vehicle throughput. There are a few things where we are, and that's, we may have a reason to do so, and that's what we want to have the conversation with, with the public and with the, with the community. The Magnolia visioning, absolutely, that's going to reduce vehicle throughput, that's going to potentially put cars in other areas, and if we really want to transform Magnolia Park, there's a lot of benefits to that, but there's going to be obviously some pretty big trade-offs. Some of the projects in downtown, such as on Magnolia, we might be reducing throughput a little bit, but that's because our downtown is the most walkable part of Burbank, and we see that speeds should be slow there so that we have the maximum ability for people to walk through that neighborhood, and so there might be a trade-off there. But, you know, we're not, we're not proposing to narrow all of the arterials to one lane to slow the cars, because we know that vehicles are still part of the conversation and that safety of motorists is also part of the conversation. So, I just wanted to kind of qualify that generally, we're not affecting cars, but there are a few strategic projects that I think Hannah mentioned, that we have to have that, that trade-off conversation.
I guess, appreciate that. I guess, the point that I was trying to drive across was, if a plan is going to, obviously, everything has a cost and a benefit, what are we benefiting, who are we benefiting, how we're benefiting them versus what it's costing? If, if the trade-off is, yeah, we can do all these things, but on the other side, we're going to be almost bringing traffic to a halt, there's going to be a lot of angry drivers out there, and just go out on Glenox or Olive at about 5:00 PM, and then all those cars that are basically lined up one after another, just trying to make it to the next light and so forth and so on. And, and I think that's, that in itself is, is a hazard, will create a problem, because there's going to be a lot of anxious people on the road wanting to cut through the alleyways, because we do have a lot of alleyways in Burbank. So, people are going to start just trying to escape through the alleyways and drive up the hill or come down the hill or so forth and so on. So, I, I think, I don't have an issue, I mean, as far as a plan where there is benefit but minimum cost, but if there's, we're trading off one for the other, I think there's going to be, basically, it's not going to be win-win situation. So, that's all I was trying to say.
Yes, with this plan, we are cognizant of arterial streets, really the streets that connect the city to, regionally in the area. So, as you all may know, Burbank has housing jobs imbalance, where we are bringing in almost double the amount of population through this, in the city during the weekday. So, transportation is an element of that, and then housing is also a part of that conversation. But in this plan, we are cognizant of really wanting to focus on arterials for motorist safety versus, you know, introducing things that may be impeding traffic flow for those areas, because it's still a very important regional connection. But in the areas that we are proposing some of these improvements, as you'll see in these projects, we are cognizant of the adjacent land use. So, for example, the Magnolia Park area, that's a very long-term transformational project, but because of the adjacent land use there of the commercial businesses, we wanted to propose something that Burbank could aspire to in the future for that area to really invigorate the commercial area that's present there today.
Thank you.
Ms. Gamboa, did you want to say something?
Do you, when your analysis of the high-injury networks, do you have anything at hand on how many people have been injured or killed at any of these areas that you're proposing interventions?
I don't have the information right with me today, but I'm happy to provide that to the board members. But in general, we did look at the killed and seriously injured and the high-injury network in the city with our collision analysis. So, you'll see that those highlighted areas in the gray-shaded map, where we split it out by bicyclist vulnerability, pedestrian vulnerability, and then also motorist vulnerability. We split them into three categories. In general, compared to the region, although I don't have the specific numbers for you, we did do a comparison at the first study session, really diving deep into the collision analysis, where regionally comparing to the county, City of LA, Glendale, Pasadena, Burbank is actually very low in the rate of not only collisions, but also really looking at the killed and severely injured.
Any other, Ms. Agia?
I have a question about the preferred plan, which is this plan. How many workshops a city has held after putting together the preferred plan to the possible? public? Is this the first time it's being looked at after the preferred plan has been completed?
So we, during the round two of the visioning phase, is when we presented the proposed policies and projects to the community. So it was in that second round where we held three events, where we presented on boards a lot of the information that you see here today. And we were able to get feedback on those boards and interactive activities that we held to see the preferences that people had so that the community is able to really pick and choose what types of policies and projects that we put forward. So the projects that you see here today, many of them, actually, all of them were presented during that community outreach phase in the second phase. As the actual, you know, document itself, we have, this presentation itself is the first time that we're taking it around to the boards and commissions, but the material has already been presented to the community.
And other than boards and commissions, it will be presented to the public too? So you will have workshop just for this document?
No. So we held the round two visioning phase specifically so that we're able to gain feedback from the community to really determine what's included in the plan, and that is what's shown here today. Other than that, we will be presenting to the boards and commissions and the council study session, and then holding a public hearing, which will all be publicly attended and noticed events.
Thank you.
Any other questions? One last question. Will future plans include how to deal with jet packs?
Sorry?
Jet packs.
Possibly in the future.
Okay.
If we're lucky.
Vice Chair Rizzotti?
I'm good.
Okay.
I guess we just make a recommendation to note and file this for our council? Motion?
Second?
Question before making the motion. So we cannot make recommendation in the process of this presentation because I wanted to add a recommendation.
That was what we're supposed to be doing tonight.
Oh, I thought we're just doing the motion for filing of the document.
So, board members, it, it mentions it's to receive review and provide staff with feedback on the proposed policies and project recommendation of the complete streets. So if you have to, if you wanna include anything in addition, you can do so at this time.
Sure, yes. I wanted to make the recommendation that this document, as it's being presented, also be shared with the public, either in form of workshops to different communities in different areas of Burbank, or, and, and definitely online on city's website. Because everyone looked at pieces of information here and there, but they haven't seen this, and they don't know how this plan will actually impact their neighborhood. That's my recommendation.
Any comments as to the recommendation?
I mean, isn't that what the, the next hearing at city council is, and the study session and the following session for that? That's kind of like the public comment to vet this. So we're here, this is public, they'll be at city council two times, right? Before it's adopted?
Correct.
So, I mean, it should be online and available for people to see and notice with maybe emails or whatever, but there's two meetings coming up that's gonna have people pub comment.
Yes, we, we do have a project website where we have posted these slides and then also have a, a running email notification list that we've been communicating through. And then we will be sending out a notice through that email list and through the website in preparation for the council study session as well as the public hearing. And the public hearing will be noticed as we, as the city does for all public hearings.
Vice Chair Rizzotti?
We're not voting or debating. All we're doing is making recommendations to the council. So your recommendation will go to the council. If they see fit, they'll do what you recommend. If they don't, they don't. So we're not, we're not debating or voting on anything. We're just noting, filing, and moving it on to the council tonight.
Ms. Wood, is this available on the website?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So at this time, the deliberation, I guess, has been concluded, so we have a motion?
Yeah.
To move it forward? Second?
Second.
Okay. A roll call, please?
Board Member Gambora?
Yes.
Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Chair Otakanyan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzotti?
Yep.
Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
So to be clear, it's the receive and file with the recommendation to council to provide the document online and maybe have any follow-up workshops for the community.
I think the idea is to make it generally a bit more accessible and available, if possible, by any means deemed, deemed necessary and adequate.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, we have the approval of last week's minutes of February 24th. Your motion on that?
I move to approve the planning board minutes from February 24th, 2020.
Second?
Board Member Gambora?
Abstain.
Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Chair Otakanyan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzotti?
Yes.
Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
At this time, planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Any future agenda items?
I have a question, and I don't know if it can be an agenda item or something that we can discuss at planning board, but it's about housing for seniors or low income. I know that there is a list, there is section eight, but a lot of people ask me this question, and I don't know the answer, that they have registered with the housing and they were supposed to move to Burbank, and when they moved here, their income goes beyond the limit and they were ineligible, ineligible. So I don't know how to discuss this, if, if we can discuss this at planning board. To at least have some priorities for residents of Burbank.
Or would it be, maybe if I can help phrase the request of staff? If you're interested in finding out about the city's section eight housing process and how they go about helping people find affordable housing, whether it's seniors or others, we have a division within the community development department that deals specifically with this issue. And I can ask the, the staff within that department to maybe come and give you kind of just a, an overview of what they do, how they assess people, what type of a waiting list they have, and how they go about and vet people for that process, if you're interested. We've done similar presentations, I think, in the past, one or two, where we've had people, I believe Simone McFarlane came and gave a presentation to you not too long ago on the affordable housing strategy. But if you want something specifically for how they vet prospective individuals to house in the city, including section eight vouchers and eligibility, we can, we can have someone come and give a presentation.
Thank you very much. Yes, exactly.
Okay.
The how to and the process seems like it's a blind thing to most of the people. I really appreciate a presentation by.
I think, I think informational type of a presentation, five minutes, going down some phone numbers, some contacts, and some general procedures as to how to get it done.
We'll do that.
Mr. Ramirez, any comments?
No, we're good, thank you.
No comments? Okay. And with this, March 9th, 2020 Burbank Planning Hearing is now closed.
And it's.